And counsel, we are now streaming live on YouTube in case that does not come up on your screen. And I believe the recording will begin in just a couple of minutes. From Teresa's perspective, but we are live on YouTube now.
Hi Claude.
Good evening, James.
I just wanted to say hi.
The recording is started.
Hello, Robin.
Hi, good evening.
All right, Teresa, let me know if you are ready. Please.
I am ready, Your Honor.
All right, then with my gavel here at home, I will call the City Council meeting for January 19th, 2021 to order. The Auburn City Council meeting scheduled for tonight will be held virtually and telephonically per Governor Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 20-28 and Healthy Washington Road Map to Recovery Plan. The City of Auburn is prohibited from holding in-person meetings at this time. The location for the City Council meetings will be virtual until Governor of Washington State authorizes local governments to conduct in-person meetings. And counsel, if you will please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. And Teresa, if you will, please call roll.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember J Raj?
Here.
Councilmember Malinga?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
All right, thank you, everyone. And Teresa, I do believe we have one agenda modification tonight, is that correct?
That is correct. Item 9C, Ordinance Number 6811 was removed from the agenda.
Thank you. All right, we do have two public hearings this evening and for virtual participation, any interested person is invited to submit written comments, voicing approval or disapproval on the tip modifications, the Transportation Improvement Plan, or the Right-of-Way Vacation. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 PM on January 19th, 2021. And I will open the public hearing. Teresa, did we receive any public comment, pardon me, for the first public hearing is for the tip modifications, City Council to conduct a public hearing to consider the modification of the 2021 through 2026 Transportation Improvement Program.
No, Your Honor, we did not.
All right, and counsel, do you have any questions? All right, I will close the public hearing and I will move to our second public hearing. Public hearing for Right-of-Way Vacation Number V2-20. City Council to conduct a public hearing to consider Right-of-Way Vacation Number V2-20. I will open the public meeting. Teresa, did we receive any public comment?
Yes, Your Honor, we received one from Brian Elliott with Square One Consultants. Mr. Elliott described the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe's goals and conditions for the project.
Thank you. All right, counsel, any questions or comments on this public hearing? All right, I do not see any, so I will close this public hearing. And we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Again, this is all virtual participation at this time. Participants can submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn, Attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Please fax comments to, Attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk with a fax number of 253-804-3116, or email comments to publiccomment@auburnwa.gov. Teresa, did we receive any public comment for tonight?
Yes, Your Honor, we've received one from Bob Zimmerman. Mr. Zimmerman expresses concern for safety standards in the City of Auburn.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to correspondence. I do not believe we have any correspondence for this evening's meeting. We will move to council ad hoc committees. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. We currently have one ad hoc committee that is for finance. And Councilmember Baggett, you are the chair, would ask that you provide your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Council Ad hoc Finance Committee, consisting of Councilmember J Raj and myself, reviewed 117 pages of 2020 Claims Vouchers and 13 pages of 2021 Claims Vouchers totaling 4.0 million and 4.2 million respectively, all dated January 19th, 2021. The committee also reviewed payroll vouchers for the period December 30th to January 12th, 2021, in the amount of $2.4 million. I would like to bring to your attention the several thousands of dollars paid during these periods to local businesses and organizations by your city as a direct result of the Government Cares Program and the City of Auburn Human Services Committee. All questions requested from the City of Auburn Finance Department regarding these vouchers were answered to the committee's satisfaction. Upon completion of our review, the committee recommends council approval of these vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. We will move to, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the January 4th, 2021 regular council meeting, the minutes of the January 11th, 2021 study session, and the claim vouchers and payroll vouchers as presented by Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Hearing none, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. We have no unfinished business. We will move to ordinances. First is Ordinance Number 6809 and Ordinance Amending Section 18.36.020 of the Auburn City Code by adding back Subsection B, Site Plan Approval. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to accept Ordinance 6809.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I will second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
A little background summary, Ordinance 6779, Amendment Chapter 18.
Oh, Councilmember, Councilmember Trout Manuel, it's Ordinance Number 6809?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one I'm reading. Chapter 18.68, ACC Zoning Map and Tax Amendment, known as only amendment. When they were amending in the process substantially B of 18.36.020 was inadvertently shown as striked out. So there was a little air and they had to go back in there and revise it and update the reference back to 18.68 ACC. So there's no need to have it go back to the Planning Commission or to the zoning tax amendment. I move to accept Ordinance 6809.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, are there any questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 6809, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Ordinance Number 6810 and Ordinance Granting Right-of-Way Vacation Number V2-20. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Sterns? Or did, I'm not sure how I got muted. Did you hear me read the ordinance? Okay, do we have a motion to approve Ordinance Number 6810? Councilmember J Raj?
I thought you called on Councilmember.
Well, I did call on Councilmember Sterns, but I didn't hear a response. Councilmember Sterns, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, or I could defer to my esteemed colleague, but I'll be glad to do this. Go ahead. I move to adopt Ordinance Number 6809.
Councilmember Sterns, I believe that's 6810.
Oh. You know, you're right. I'm reading wrong thing. I move to adopt Ordinance Number 6810.
Thank you. Councilmember J Raj?
I will second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Muckleshoot Development Corporation has applied to the City of Auburn for a vacation of a right-of-way of an alley located just north of Auburn Way South between Dogwood Street Southeast and Fur Street Southeast. And this ordinance would approve the Right-of-Way Vacation Number V2-20 and vacates the right-of-way subject to conditions outlined in the ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 6810, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Right, Ordinance Number 6811 was removed from our agenda this evening. We will move to resolutions. Resolution Number 5573, a resolution relating to the Auburn Food Bank's operation of the Daytime Resource Center and authorizing the mayor to negotiate, administer, and execute an agreement with the Auburn Food Bank. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move adoption of Resolution Number 5573.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga?
I'd like to second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since mid-2018, the City of Auburn began a partnership with the Auburn Food Bank to provide daytime services, the Ray of Hope, to unsheltered individuals. Since this time, the need for services in the unsheltered has continued to expand and increase significantly. Both the Auburn Food Bank and the city wishes to continue to provide daytime services to unsheltered individuals on the Valley Cities owned properties with the City of Auburn collectively Valley Cities property through the use of temporary modular building until Auburn Food Bank is able to move into the Auburn Consolidated Resources Center.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? All right, seeing none, would you please unmute? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5573, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5574, a resolution relating to the Auburn Food Bank's operation of the night shelter and authorizing the mayor to negotiate, administer, and execute an agreement with the Auburn Food Bank. Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution 5574.
Thank you. Councilmember J Raj?
I'd like to second that. No, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to second that resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you. Basically, this is a resolution to relating to the operation of the night shelter at the Auburn Food Bank's operation over at the at the Auburn Resource Center. And this will cover the period through the end of the year of 2021 and also through the year of 2022 at $150,000 for each year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments from counsel? All those in favor of Resolution 5574, please unmute and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No. I'm sorry.
Were you, are you opposing the motion?
I, I thought I pushed my mic off and I said no. I just repeated to say no, so. I said yes at the beginning. I outspoken out loud.
Okay, Teresa, did you, did you record that appropriately?
That Councilmember J Raj had seconded, I'm sorry.
No, the vote itself. I asked for all, all in favor, please say aye. And then when I asked for those opposed, please say no. Councilmember Trout Manuel had said no, but her original vote was yes, so believe we have it corrected. Councilmember Trout Manuel, your vote is to be an aye, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, I do have it correct.
All right, thank you. All right, so the motion passes. Resolution Number 5576, a resolution approving and adopting the modification of the 2021 through 2026 Transportation Improvement Program to address recent grant awards. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 5576.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. This was an item on the agenda tonight for a public hearing. And this is our annual update of our Transportation Improvement Plan, which is required by state law. And we are also required to modify as needed. And this tip was modified to reflect recent grant awards the city received in November of 2020, including the Fourth Street Southeast Preservation Project, the High Friction Surface Treatment at six different curved roadway locations throughout the city, and the Artorial Street Preservation Program, which a portion of the 2021 and 2022 funds from this program reallocated for either required local match for the grant funds.
Thank you. All right. Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 5576, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please, all opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5578, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a state grant from the Washington State Department of Transportation in the amount of $414,000 for the High Friction Surface Treatment Project. Councilmember J Raj?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to adopt Resolution 5578.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns?
I will second that.
Thank you. Councilmember J Raj?
Thank you, Your Honor. The background summary on this is the High Friction Surface Treatment Project, also known as HFST, includes the application of fine rough aggregate to the pavement to increase pavement friction at six locations. The higher pavement friction helps motorists maintain better control in both dry and wet driving conditions, reducing the potential for a crash. The project scope, scope includes six locations that were identified from an analysis of risk factors throughout the city as part of our, the city's local road safety plan completed in 2020. It is anticipated that this project will begin construction during summer of 2022. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right. Excuse me. Councilmember Brown, did you have a question or a comment?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make note that for the 414,000 grant, we are leveraging only $6,000 to make that happen. And it's a heck of a good deal, so I encourage the support of this.
Thank you very much. Yes, it is, it is definitely a good use of $6,000. All right, any other questions or comments? Right, all those in favor of Resolution 5578, please unmute and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Right, and counsel, before we move on, I just want to make a comment that there, we do not accept comments during the meeting, but there was a resident who had questions about the right-of-way vacation, so we will ensure that we are in contact with the resident. If the resident is still on the call, if you would please provide your contact information in the Q and A section, then we will ensure that we are getting back to you on that. But we, we do not, we accept written comment prior to the meeting, but not during the meeting at this time. All right. Resolution Number 5579, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an easement agreement with Puget Sound Energy, Inc. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 5579.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, Your Honor. The City owns a property at 5031 Auburn Way South and Motorola Solutions desires to construct and operate a communications tower for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network on property just to the north. And the, the resolution would authorize the mayor to execute an easement agreement between the city and Puget Sound Energy.
Thank you. Questions or comments from counsel? All right, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5579, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5580, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an airport, an airport land lease agreement with MD500 Development LLC. Councilmember J Raj?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move, like to move, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 5580.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga?
I'd like to second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember J Raj?
Thank you, Your Honor. The summary on this is the Auburn Airport has land available for development of aircraft hangars. The development of hangars like these being proposed by the developer will help satisfy demand for this type of product while also bring added revenue to the airport and positive economic impact to the city. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any questions? Hearing none, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of Resolution 5580, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5581, a resolution temporarily designating the locations for regular, special, and study session meetings of the City Council and of the committees, boards, and commissions of the city as virtual locations until Washington's governor authorizes local governments to conduct in-person meetings. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey? Deputy Mayor Decorse.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution five-five-eight-one.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Decorse.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an update as read in the beginning of the meeting by the mayor regarding our virtual meetings that we are required to have until the governor provides us with the opening of, of city halls and other entities across the state. Prior to this, we were under a four-phase program. We are now under a two-phase program. And as we move forward into this process, the governor will be updating and providing information as to when cities can reopen again and eliminate our virtual meetings and get back to meetings in person.
Thank you. Questions or comments from counsel? All those, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of resolution fifty-five-eighty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Decorse.
Thank you, Your Honor. On January seventh, I participated in the first two thousand and twenty-one Growth Management Policy Board meeting. There were a number of topics on the meeting, including approving some local jurisdictions' processes they go through for approval through PSRC, which is on Regional Council. And the main presentation was on the regional growth strategy process. As the region continues to grow, and as our population continues to grow, there is an emphasis through the Vision Two Thousand and Fifty on how to address that growth. And this is mainly concerned with growth focused in the urban growth areas, city centers, and other areas such as that. Sixty-five percent of the region's population growth is seventy-five percent of the employment growth in regional growth centers near high-transit capacity stations. This is also looking at better job-housing balance by shifting employment allocations from King County, and then also looking at how groups, group cities and unincorporated areas can be looked at through common characteristics to facilitate this regional growth strategy. And then it also identifies and is identifying some numeric guideline targets for cities in the county to review. On January fifteenth, I attended our monthly Sound Cities Association Deputy Mayor slash Council President slash Pro Tem Mayor meeting. And we, we take out a full hour. We have a great participation for virtually all the deputy mayors across the region. And we have a very robust discussion related to some of the topics. This meeting last Friday, we talked about the council rules and procedure. And there were questions related to how we, as a city, transitioned from the council committee process that we used in the past to our study session process of some which referred to it as a committee of the whole. It's a little bit different than a committee of the whole, how we do our study sessions. But they were very interested in how we, how we address that, and how all seven of us council members are able to be present to hear the topics of ordinance and resolutions and other briefings and presentations prior to coming to city council meetings. So very, very good. There's also a discussion related to planned council retreats for this year. And many councils are having retreats this year. And it looks like we also may have one planned for ourselves as we go forward for later this year. And many of them are going to be held virtually, and some are hoping to wait until we can meet in person, which would be a great thing to do, once again, of being able to get together a little bit closer and have a good face-to-face discussion. So looking forward to the next meeting next month with our fellow deputy mayors. And then lastly, I was reappointed to the National League of Cities Community and Economic Development Committee. And two things in that committee that, not out of a number of things that are focused on, but two things in particular are talking to colleagues across the country. We have great discussions related to the issue on affordable housing, and also the nationwide issue on how we address homelessness and what everybody is calling the eviction cliff. Once the moratoriums on rents are lifted, what happens after that? And there is a strong concern across the nation of people falling off the edge, if you will, and creating a tremendous amount of homelessness as people are not able to recover after the pandemic. That's my report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Okay, my report is also with National League of Cities. I was also re-elected for the Human Development Committee, and also elected for the second vice chair for the Hilo organization. Also, we also talked about the retreats. We're going to be planning on when we're going to meet again, if we're going to meet in person or virtually. But that's part of my committee, my committee meetings. But I wanted to read something because I didn't get a chance to write in for Martha Luther King. And I remember him speaking this all, every time he spoke about.
Councilmember Trout Manuel. I, I apologize, but there was an email sent to you by our city attorney today with a reminder that we are only to be talking about our work on committees. I apologize for that, but want to make sure that we are following the guidelines that our city attorney has reminded us are in the council rules and procedures.
All right. Okay, then I complete my, my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
No report, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Brown.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga.
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
A couple things. I was appointed to the Sound Cities Association's water, regional water quality committee as an alternate. And I'm glad to say that was a position that was previously held by Councilmember Trout Manuel. So it's, I'm glad to see that Auburn is still participating on that committee. I also attended a meeting of the National League of Cities Indigenous Municipal Officials. I'm part of that. And then also, I, I don't know if this is out of line, but I just wanted to make sure. I thanked Director Goll for helping me understand our airport resolutions. She was incredibly helpful. So I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj.
No report this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I will just share that there have been numerous meetings going on regarding our homelessness response and the regional response, as well as getting some of the larger South King County city mayors together to determine our combined response. And as, probably is no surprise to any of you, our continued approach, our approach continues to be one of accountability for the city, the funders, the service providers, as well as those receiving services. And I will leave it at that this evening. We have no need for a closed or executive session. And so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.